Welcome, everybody, to the December 4, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers for your convenience. At this point, we'll call the meeting in order. I'll do a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we come to review and approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Hancock to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to item number five. I'll recognize John Moro. This is introduction to the new county highway superintendent, Joseph Miller.
Good morning, commissioners. John Moro, HR Department. I just wanted to introduce you to Joe Miller officially as our highway superintendent and welcome him to the county. And I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to say hello and see him in his official capacity.
Thank you.
Any comments, Joe?
Ah, not yet.
We're waiting for a speech. Welcome aboard and thanks, John, for helping out with the value, or getting them started and going through the process. And Mark, for all your help also, and I think you'll find you'll have a good crew to work with.
Absolutely. I look forward to working with everybody, and Mark's been great so far in the first couple of days here, and just look forward to it.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Next, we come to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Holly Hennies, office.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 20, 2018. And number seven is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on December 18, 2018, for budget supplement SP-18-017 for the general fund jail budget.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any member from the audience that'd like, any two of those items removed for consideration? Any from the board? I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda six and seven.
Second.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by DeSanto for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to regular agenda items, and number eight is a lien release request from CH. Would you like to? Your name's been blocked from everything for your privacy.
Thank you. Most of you know me. My name's Chuck Henry. I'm asking for lien release because some things happened that I felt wasn't fair to me to happen. One was last year, but I won't bring that up. Right now, I had to quit my job because of health reasons, so I'm just on disability right now. And I've got a lot of the bills. I've got to pay like medication and doctor visits and that. And I just hopefully I can get this lien release.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Is anybody here from attorney's office? Have anybody auditor's office on the liens? Any discussion?
How much it is? Yeah. Should have been, did you guys get?
Yeah, I've got that. I was just curious if anybody had any comments from our office. So Chuck, how much is it?
Hmm, I can't remember how much it was totaling because it's counting back way back when I had assistance with medication.
The total is the 64034.
640. And Chuck, it looks like you've made one payment?
Yeah, I tried making one payment. I just have a difficult time kind of scheduling how to do it and what. I face a knee surgery next week, so I'm going to be homebound for a while, so. It'll be a while before I either go back to my regular, my recent job or having to find another one that's suitable for me.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Recommendation is for not to go to credit collections and to pay at least $5 a month. That'd be my motion.
There's a motion to not take it to credit collections and pay $5 a month. Is there a second? At this point, there's no second. Is there any discussion? From the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I have a hard time with these and because there's a lot of people out there that have a lot of problems. And if we set precedence and start waiving these, we're going to have a flood of people coming in here that can't pay their taxes. With many of the same reasons that you are putting before us today. There's a lot of opportunity out there or availability to different charities and that kind of thing that could help you out with this if you were to contact them and write them letters and stuff like that. And I have a feeling that if, that you would probably be able to come up with the money to pay these taxes if you could contact those charitable organizations that are available to help out in these types of situations. But as a commissioner, my job is to protect our taxpayers, and I don't think that it is the taxpayer's job to help pay for other people's taxes. That's just my feeling.
Cindy. The motion that was set forth was not taking it to credit collections but requested a payment. It seems like we've done that once before, something similar, didn't we?
Yes, your honor. Maybe a new title today. We have done that in the past, and actually, if anyone has a lien and they are making regular payments on it, be it a dollar or $5, it does not go to credit collections. It does not incur any interest on that lien.
Okay.
So they just need to make some form of a regular payment, and it will not go to credit collections.
So at this point, Chuck decided to start making payments. Would that get re-taken back from the credit collection? Is that where it's at right now?
Not in collections.
It's not in collections right now.
So as long as he makes a regular monthly payment, we will not send it to credit collections. And that can be even, you know, as $5 or a dollar, as long as there's activity on that account.
Okay. Thanks for clarification, Cindy, and for the honor. That was, I appreciate that. Chuck, so now you understand what's going on?
Yeah.
You're, from what Mark said and what Deb said, I think what the board, I'm not going to speak for the board, but to keep it out of collections, if you made some sort of a payment, as she suggested, $5, I'd keep it out of collections.
Yeah, I think I can do that.
Do you have one last plea before?
Yeah, I think I'll go with your suggestion.
Okay.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hancock.
So I'll be saying no today, Chuck, because you can go in there and pay it dollar even and, and take care of the issue. You don't even have to pay five, it sounds like. So just so you keep making some kind of payment of between a dollar or five or whatever, Chuck, just to make sure it doesn't go to credit collections. I think hopefully you can do that.
Yeah, I think I can do that.
Thank you, Chuck.
Okay. Thanks, Chuck. So I'd look for a motion on this item.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion made by Hancock, seconded by DeSanto to deny. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Chuck, I do, I do recommend that you try and get a hold of some of those charitable organizations. Knights of Columbus, Catholic Social Services, Lutheran Social Services, that might be able to help you out with this.
Okay. See what I can do.
Thanks, Chuck.
I'm going to have a few months at home where I can do mostly anything, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to items from the auditor. Alcohol beverage license renewals. And I believe last time, as we discussed, Cindy, you just kind of read, read them all? Does, and the board does want to vote on them all at once after she reads through them?
You have to abstain from anything?
Nope, I don't have to abstain from any of them.
I would recommend read them all off and then vote them all all at once.
That kind of seems to be the consensus.
These are the renewal licenses. So we have, under the retail wine on-off sale, we have Black Hills Helicopters, TK Saloon and Grill LLC, under Canvas Inc., under the liquor retail on-sale with Sunday Sales, Moonshine Gulch Saloon, Rimrock Event Center, Silver Dollar Saloon, and TK Saloon and Grill.
That's for the liquor license, right?
Yes.
And move approval?
Moved by Hancock.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The other, or the next items that we have are the budget supplements. And SP-1812 is for the 2018 Abuse and Neglect Budget, and we're asking to supplement that budget by $75,000 from unassigned fund balance.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Cindy, can you, the information that you had said, that you had come up and we talked about, can you say that for the public and for the commissioners?
In 2017, we did supplement that budget by 75,000, and it was still overdrawn at the end of the year by 37,000. In 2016, we supplemented 13,000, and it was overdrawn 46,000 at the end of the year. So this is something that just keeps growing. The dollar amounts go up, the cost of the attorneys representing these children and parents keeps going up.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. I'll move approval.
Move for approval. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Cindy, I got a question for you real quick before we move forward. On those licenses, we just went through the liquor. There was four of them, right?
And the wine retail on-off sale. I read those also, the three.
Okay.
Was one at the top of the list and then two on the second page.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we hit them all. Okay, I'm ready to move forward.
The next supplement is SP-18-12. Whoops, wrong page, sorry about that. 13, and this is a supplement to the 2018 election budget for $60,000. We did have the extra, the special election in February that increased our, our costs over the year, and then we did receive the unanticipated revenue from the city for the payment on that. So I'm asking for a supplement for $60,000 from the current year revenues.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto. I'll second it, seconded by LaCroy. Any discussion from public or board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Busker.
The city paid $60,000? All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three.
SP-18-14 is the 2018 supplement to the IT budget for $130,000. This is coming from their assigned equipment reserves that they've been adding to every year.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Move for approval?
Second.
Seconded by Buskerd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next supplement that we have is 18-15 is the accumulated building 2017A master plan refinance budget supplement. This is something that isn't actually put in the budget. This is part of the refinance of 2016B, I believe, bonds. And that money is sitting in an escrow account, and that is actually what makes the payment. So that's why it wasn't supplemented or wasn't budgeted, but we do need to do a supplement to make it clean out of the books.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hancock. Seconded by Buskerd. Any discussion from public or board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
SP-18-16 is a 2018 county building expansion fund supplement, and these expenses aren't budgeted throughout the year, but then at the end of the year, we do a final budget supplement to cover the expenditures in that fund.
Okay, and that's item number five, supplement 18016.
Yes.
Is there any discussion from the public? Any from the board?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Just a question, maybe that's for Mr. Cool. Or chair for, on the jail expansion and remodel, it says 911 for the supplement, and it says in the back, we had ending balance of 660,000. So we, I guess I don't understand the 300, oh, those three.
Deb, could you help me out? Where, where you're seeing the 611?
On the back, right here, Lloyd. On the adopted budget range and balance available. We've used all the 660.
So the, when we, we, I submitted this to you, what, three weeks ago or something? So what we do is we estimate an amount, what we could spend through the end of the year yet. And so, and generally, we try to push those numbers higher so that we don't, we don't miss it. So I, I do have stuck some money in there relative to, with, with an expectation that it is possible that, once we get a contractor on board, they could start doing something that could, could, we could incur some additional costs, so I put some money in there for that.
So the original amount was 660, and then the supplement was 911. So the 300 comes from, or two-something comes, 200-some thousand comes from what area then? I mean, where do you get the money to put in?
All of this money is actually coming from the restricted fund balance.
Okay.
And the money that you're looking at that's over and above what has already been spent is a projection that Mike has come up with, that we may spend by the end of 2018, and he just, we put those numbers in there so that we don't overdraw that budget.
Okay. I guess I just didn't know where you're getting the money from, but, all right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. I'll second. Any further discussion? So the motion on the floor is to approve the budget supplement. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Cindy.
We have one, one more year-end supplement, and that is SP-18-17. It is supplement, to supplement the jail budget in the amount of 75,000, and we would request that we schedule a hearing at 9:15 on Tuesday, December 18.
That'd be my motion.
No, we already did that.
We did that at the beginning.
It's on consent calendar?
Yeah.
Actually, I just thought we had to do it again.
I guess we don't need that one. I'm sorry, I have it in my stack.
You had me looking for it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks. Next, we have items from Buildings and Grounds. And the item is authorization to advertise for bid opening for the PC Care Campus and Residential Treatment Project. Mike Cool.
Good morning. Mike Cool, Buildings and Grounds Director. The second phase or the completion of the residential treatment portion of the building is, the bid documents are nearing completion, so I'm here to request authorization to go to bid. We're looking, we'd like to schedule that bid opening for January 8 at 2:00 p.m. This, this project will complete the second floor, or east end of the project, which is basically, for the most part, just open space at this time. So it will build out those areas into this residential, living areas for the residential treatment program. It will include some sleeping areas, lounge areas for these living purposes, restrooms and shower, with showers, and the support spaces necessary for that. There's a male and female area for separation. There's also some site work involved. We're doing a, a small parking lot as, to meet city zoning requirements for the, for the project, and some landscaping and circulation paths on the block. This project will be funded by, through a generous donation from a, from a citizen that's interested in seeing this project completed. The sheriff received a $1.5 million donation already. That donor has also indicated that they are willing to fund amounts above that as well to see the project completed.
Mike, could we get a little more background of what's, how this is going to work from Mr. Toom? And what I mean by that is, this isn't like a program where recreating and starting, it's actually going to transfer over that's already on La Crosse Street, and we're going to end up with a building inventory and so forth.
Good morning, Kevin Toom, Painton County Sheriff. And to address that question, you're right, it's a consolidation of our programs. So we didn't move all the programs from La Crosse Street. A portion of them remained there because even though the second floor finished. So the residential treatment bids will move, and it'll give us more residential treatment bids, and that'll vacate the La Crosse Street property, so the county can choose to do what they want with it. I've advocated selling the property, but that's up to the county commission ultimately. And so it'll free up that property for the county to do something else with it. It'll consolidate our services. You remember, it was probably three or four months ago, probably longer than that, because Mike Peterson and I presented about the cost of running two separate facilities, keeping La Crosse Street open in this facility. And it was somewhere in the neighborhood. I don't have the memo in front of me, 4,500,000 over four years to run two separate facilities. So we gained some efficiencies by putting all of our operation under one roof as well. So that's the additional win in it for us.
Thanks, Kevin. I just wanted to make sure people in the audience knew.
There's a big picture.
A little bit of history, the big picture on it, yes.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hancock.
Um, just a little bit more, Kevin, I guess, thank you for bringing that up, Lloyd. Can you explain basically what the treatment center does so people know that people aren't just going to be coming in and out living there? There's going to be a process in which we do the treatment in that facility? Maybe just some of that process, how long people stay, the requirements to, to be in there and get treatment through Pennington County, if we could, Mr. Toom?
Chairman, if I may. And again, services we already provide in Pennington County, so it isn't a new program. It's an existing program, but we would expand our capacity. But it's for substance abuse, addiction services, for drugs and alcohol. And of course, you know, we've been losing the war on methamphetamine for the last year, so it's had a huge impact on all of our systems. And this, you know, we have what we call meth-opia treatment beds in this facility to address methamphetamine and opioids, so, excuse me. This would go a long way towards helping addressing those needs. And we service not just Painton County people, but state clients and federal clients, which also generate, you know, revenue for Painton County to offset our cost of running the facility. In terms of staying in the facility, it can be anywhere from 30 days up to six months, generally speaking, in terms of people actually living at the facility while they're receiving treatment.
Okay, thank you. I think a lot of people didn't know that. I didn't, I thought when we did the treatments, they just came and gone or go, and, or they stayed in there for a week. But 30 to six, you know, 30 days to six months, so people don't think there's a flow of traffic going in and out of that facility for that. And then on the signed contract, Kevin, do we have anything that says? I, I know the man had gave 1.5 million dollars. That says that he's got a cap on that or anything else?
He's not set a cap, and I've talked to him about the additional cost. And I guess once the bids actually come in, we'll approach him at that point and say, here's the number. And I guess if he chooses not to fund it to that level, then, I've always said, we won't spend money we don't have. We'll either get the money, or I guess the commission wants to use other funds, it's up to them at that time. But I'm optimistic that we'll be able to put it together.
Okay, but we don't have another contract that says he will do that. He just, and he, and he gave his word the first time, so I don't see him not doing it again, but.
And we didn't have a contract per se the first time. It was just his donation. And so, yeah, at this point, it's just a verbal agreement. But again, if we go through this process and we get the bids and we don't have the funding, we're not obligated to move forward with the project.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Busker.
I, I assume that when this thing gets up and running, you'll keep some statistics on how well it's doing? Because although I'm a little pessimistic, I don't see, what I've heard is, good luck with treating meth people. That doesn't work. But, you know, I'm sure someday here you'll bring back to the commission recidivism figures.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. You know, one thing we, we're doing at the Care Campus currently is, we're probably going overboard on data. We have a lot of data just to help address these types of questions. And, you know, methamphetamine treatment, you're right, it's extremely complicated. It's generally not 30 days. It's up to six months for, you know, residential type treatment, and then extensive outpatient after that to deal with meth addicts are generally more complicated than other types of addiction. But, you know, currently, we're trying to arrest our way out of the problem, and that's not working either. And I think we need to get back to both prevention and treatment to make it a more comprehensive approach to have any sort of impact.
Any further discussion?
That would lead away, Lloyd. Appreciate it.
I entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Move for approval. I'll second. Seconded by LaCroy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Four approval, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Next, we come to items from equalization. We'll recognize Shannon.
Good morning. You have two abatement requests in front of you from my office. The, the first one, Glocheski, is a mobile home that transferred title, and state law requires that taxes be paid in advance before title can be transferred. So we need to abate the regular tax bill on this. This ordinarily would have been done first part of the year, but it fell through the cracks. The second one, Schrader, is a home that burned. It was a total loss, and the abatement is for the value of the structure for the three months of the year after the fire.
Thanks, Shannon. Is there any objection to doing both these at once? Thanks Shannon, is there any objection to doing both these at once?
Nope.
Move approval of both?
Second.
Then moved by Haggard, seconded by DeSanto to approve both abatements. Ready for the discussion, Mr. Fairby?
How you gonna fix the problem of, of having to have a title a year ahead of the taxes? How you gonna fix this? This, this is about the second and third time this has happened recently.
I'd like to change the law that requires it, but I don't have the power to do that. I absolutely hate the statute that requires taxes to be paid in advance on mobile homes. Doesn't have to be done on any other type of property that changes ownership. I did help get the law changed and we don't have to pay taxes in advance in every situation, but we still, we still have it. It's a state law that requires it.
So you've attempted to change the law?
Yep. It, the, the law has actually changed in this case. The law used to say taxes had to be paid in advance on a mobile home that was transferring title or moving. We did get the law changed and it, it doesn't have to pay taxes in advance when it's just transferring title. But it does when it's getting a moving permit. That's, that's a big step in the right direction. I'd like to eliminate the, the requirement for the moving permit. But most, most of our problem are transferring titles. When a brand new double white on five acres sells, you used to have to pay taxes in advance on that. No, no more. This is a, this is from last year, the law was just recently changed.
So clearly there's a problem and you're gonna keep working at trying to fix it, right?
Well, this has been fixed, you know, the title transfer, that's, that's done. But we still have some of these when they move and there's, there's some good reason, well, there's reason for it. This specific problem has been changed by the law.
Thanks Shannon. Motion on the floors for approval of both abatements. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks Shannon. Next we come to items from the highway department. Organize Mark Shock, this is the Sheridan Lake Road construction report.
Good morning, Mark Shock, Pennington County Highway. Provided for your review are sign-in sheets and comment forms that we received during our Sheridan Lake Road Public Information Meeting back in July, the end of July, two thousand and eighteen. Also provided for your review are a number of Pennington County Highway Department complaint slash concern forms that we have on the website. People can fill out. The forms, most of these forms address disapproval of the curb and gutter that is planned for installation on the Sheridan Lake Road reconstruction project. Most of the complaint concern forms you'll see were, were provided by bicycle enthusiasts that feel that the curb could somewhat inhibit their safety or being able to escape traffic. And they would prefer a shoulder in the area. Of the thirteen comment forms that were received back in July, ten of them are being addressed currently or have been resolved. A lot of them during our right-of-way negotiations, we have taken care of their concerns and, and got right-of-way acquired from those people. Of the complaint confer- concern forms, two of those are, are landowners on Sheridan Lake Road that will be involved with the, the right-of-way negotiations. I, I believe the rest of them are, are members of a bicycle club and they, they just ride the area or want to ride the area. I have a lot of other information that I can answer, or I can answer any questions that you may have first here.
Mark, could you give commission or people in the public bigger scope of this type of project? As, as you read through the, the agenda and you see the concerns and complaints, the scope of this project is huge. I mean, how many people does it affect?
As far as landowner right-of-way acquisition, I should say, we have a hundred and twenty-four parcels that are either permanent or temporary easement that need to be acquired. Currently, there have been sixty-two acquired, right? We're right at the fifty percent mark. Unfortunately, well, maybe unfortunately, we, those right-of-way acquisitions started on the east end. So most of the, the property that is involved between Alberta Drive and Spring Canyon Trails that involve the, the potential removal of curb and gutter right-of-way has already been acquired on most of those properties. And if the commission decides to change current plans, they, right-of-way negotiations may have to take place again on those properties.
Okay, thanks Mark. Does any discussion from the commission?
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
I was at the meeting, the public meeting that was out there. And there was a really, a lot of good input, input that day and the DOT was there and all the players that were involved with this were there with environmental specialists and different people. So I think they, they were pretty thorough at answering questions. I know at first I seen a lot of people were very, very mad. And it sounds like we have found a lot of solution with that because of Mark and our highway department. So moving forward, I would hope we would just follow the plan that we had in place and that we don't keep delaying because we've already found out when you keep delaying, it costs more money later to do more envi- environmental stuff and different things that have to do with roads or bridges in this case. So I think you've done a great job, Mark. You were at the first meeting when we had the public and then it sounds like you guys have found some really good solution. You got sixty-two right-of-way and that's from Alberta to, like you said, the canyon. Those were the hardest ones to get, if I was looking at the map right, because the west side is a lot of forest service and stuff. So I think you've done a great job and I think we need to keep moving forward. This is a, one of our busiest highways in our county, so.
Thanks Deb.
Thank you, Ms. Haggard.
Mr. DeSanto, did you have a comment?
Yes, one of the letters jumped out at me and I just wanted to know, because I don't know the location of their house, seventy-nine twenty Spring Canyon Trail. They were talking about putting up a guardrail to protect their yard. Are they on a curve where, where the, a car could go through the corner and wind up in their yard or in their kids' lap?
I know which one you're talking about. Okay, here it is, their address.
Seven nine two oh Spring Canyon Trail? So they must be right at the corner of Spring Canyon Trail and Sheridan Lake Road?
Correct. That was at the, the intersection of Spring Canyon Trail and Sheridan Lake Road. I spoke to these people, went over and visited with them, well, actually the night of the, the public meeting and, and listened to their concerns and since then, these people have sold the property. And the new owners, we, we have reviewed the plans with them and discussed the issues. And that parcel has been acquired, they needed right-of-way in that area or in that parcel has been acquired, so that, that's resolved.
It is resolved.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So Mark, could you explain how much is the projection on this project? How long's it been going on?
Well, this project started, I believe, in, back in two thousand and eight. So it's been about ten years in, in the works. There's been a, a lot of work done on it. Lot of agencies involved, federal highways, forest service, South Dakota DOT, Pennington County, of course. It's ten years into the works and we're hoping for, to get it approved, advertised and let next year in two thousand and nineteen. Hopefully start construction, it would be, at best would be late nineteen and then twen- but more likely two thousand and twenty for construction.
So the purpose of today's presentation was to get, show us what some of the concerns were and the work that you're going on? And if there was any desire from this commission to, to deviate from the original plans?
Correct. We'd please, we'd asked, please advise if change to current design plans is the desire of the Pennington County Commission for the Sheridan Lake Road project. I, I do have some with here on, on, on the segment that involves the curb and gutter, that is high priority with the bicycle associations or bicycle enthusiasts. That segment is planned at this point to have three twelve-foot lanes, two driving lanes and one turning lane. So that's a total of thirty-six feet. And then the curb and gutter, and on each side curb and gutter has two foot of gutter. So the, the total flat surface will be forty feet in that, through that area. It's about a eight tenths of a mile long. Where this, between Alberta Drive and Spring Canyon Trails. And there also is in the plans grading, grading only, a flat area for a side, future sidewalk slash multi-use path. And that is planned for a six-foot path. So there will be a flat area adjacent to the roadway if somebody wants to walk or ride on there. At, again, at this time, it's not planned for concrete on that path. That would be an additional about a hundred and twenty-five dollars to put concrete on that path. But you see why the comments, we have pros and cons, people in favor and people against the, the sidewalk because of the, the need that, for snow removal in the winter time.
You meant a hundred and twenty-five thousand, right?
Pardon?
You meant a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
I, yes, what did I say?
One hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no. I wish concrete was that cheap. No, you are correct, one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I'll give you the hundred and twenty-five dollars.
At, at the meeting, that was the biggest issue, guys, was that, that sidewalk and that curb and gutter. Some of it was right-of-way, but a lot of it was that area with the curb gutter and the path. And a lot of people thought it was concrete. And I think more people were more in for the idea once it was not concreted, so.
Yes, the, the rest of the project will have a four-foot shoulder at least on one side of the road all the way to three eighty-five to address bicycle concerns. We will have a pretty safe way the, the entire route. This, this route does not have that four-foot shoulder, but it does have forty foot of, of, of lane there. Cars and bicycles, we feel should be able to, to share that forty foot of, of path in a pretty safe manner.
But Mark, how close is the city limits to where this property is? Or is it, isn't some of that part of city limits over there? Or did they join some of it into city limits?
The, the city limits covers about approximately a quarter mile on the north side of this project. In countryside north subdivision was annexed, but the city did not annex the right-of-way. That is still Pennington County. But there are three parcels that we would need perpetual easement or H slots that would, that are going to encroach into the city limits on those properties. They have been sent to the city for review to see if they have, have come on, comments on that. They're not very big pieces of property, but we are asking for them in our negotiations.
So Mark and Joe, since you're here, you're, are you looking for consensus of the commission to move forward with the plans that we have?
Yes, we are.
So that you're confident moving forward with what you got and what you're doing? So I guess, let's just take a vote on that.
Mr. Chairman, before we go there.
Mr. Fairby.
Refresh me, the, the sidewalk, that's not a, not gonna be a sidewalk right-of-way, that's just on the south side or the north side or both?
The grading for future sidewalk will be on the south side of the road between.
Only?
South side of the road only, yes. From Alberta Drive to Spring Canyon Trail.
And, and then graded and then what kind of cover, gravel or?
Right now, I think it's just grading with, with dirt at this point.
Grass, weeds, whatever. What, what do you anticipate will happen once it's graded? You gonna grass it down or is it gonna be a weed patcher?
Um, what was the question, George? I'm sorry.
After it's graded, you're not gonna put asphalt or concrete? Then you're gonna plant, plant with grass or what, what are you gonna do with?
Uh, it would probably, it would need to be stabilized, yes. There'd be seeded with grass at this point. We can change that if the, if the commission would like.
It's an issue. And then one of these persons commented about, if the sidewalk is next to them or the, the area for sidewalk, then who has to shovel it?
And that's the concerns we have heard on, on the concrete, yes. Because it's, there will be some steep banks from some of those properties for them to walk across their yard to get to a sidewalk. Our guess, at this point, our thoughts would be, you know, it, it would be grassed over, it'd be a grassy area, there wouldn't, there would not be a sidewalk to shovel. It'd be a place where people could walk or ride bicycles if they wanted to get out of the, the traffic lanes. But it would probably have no winter maintenance.
I guess my concern is, why am I gonna go ahead and pave it or concret it now? As part of the project, rather than coming, coming back. I guess I didn't know that was part of the plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so consensus, what I'm getting is, is Joe and Mark would like the consensus of the commission to move forward with the original plans. That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion made, LaCroy, seconded by Haggard. Any further discussion? Is there anybody in the pub, out in the audience from Sheridan Lake Road that'd like to speak? Sir.
What is coming up, I, I can't vote for this thing without little more definite plans on the sidewalk, just laying a, setting aside an area.
Okay, thank you. We got somebody who's coming up and speaking. Please identify yourself for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Leo Ham. I have no real issues with this particular project to the extent that I would express an opinion that I'm not a real advocate of curb and gutter. And I think it would be less problems, probably for drainage and other things, if we would let the water run as it kinda would naturally. Having said that, the real reason that I'm here today primarily is that I heard over the radio this morning that the commission was going to address Sheridan Lake Road from Alberta to Crell Drive. Now, that is of great concern to, to my family. And we're most inquisitive in regard to the overall planning of these two different projects, one by the city and one by the county, as to whether they have taken into consideration the future needs of, of Sheridan Lake Road in total, particularly from, from the municipalities portion of it. We don't know yet what the city will have and as I understand, the money is, is coming from a joint organizations that I know very little about. But it, it seems to me totally inappropriate if one entity doesn't share with the other and everything they know in regard to the potential for additional traffic on Sheridan Lake Road over the next thirty to fifty years. It's kind of ironic to me, it kinda dates me, but when I was courting my wife, she lived on, on West Main between, oh, between the Rooster and, and Hallie Park. And the traffic on Sher- on West Main at that time was about the same as it is in front of my driveway on Sheridan Lake Road today on a regular basis. So it's in. So it's in, it, and, and I don't know what, uh, how you can plan without having an understanding of what effect this improvement will have on the, um, uh, traffic on Sheridan Lake Road. I think by the improvement of this, we will see, uh, probably considerable additional commercial traffic as well as residential. And in the development of, further development of Sheridan Lake Road, that needs to be considered by the municipality as well as the county. And, um, there is a tremendous amount of property really to be developed yet on Sheridan Lake Road, uh, uh, partially in the ci, in the, uh, area that the city is responsible for, but also in the area of the county. And, uh, um, my family will be interested in, in, in both cases because it'll have a tremendous impact on us. And more specifically in regard to the cities in relationship to that that is in a proximity to be probably developed in the not-too-distant future. And the city's plan, as I was told originally, was, would not consider a lot of that that is, uh, north of Sheridan Lake Road, which to me don't make any sense at all. And there is quite a lot of area on the south side of Sheridan Lake Road that has a, a potential for development. And I don't know to what extent all of the big picture is being considered by the differing entities.
Thanks, Leo.
And with that, I'll, I'll, thank you very much for, and if you have any questions of me, I'd try to answer.
Thanks, Leo. Um, I think right now we're, we're in the working process, and a lot of the studies have been, are still in process, and we'll still have more public meetings. But I think what, uh, Mark has requested is just to move forward with those plans, nothing set, and work through the details, if, if I am correct. It's not to make any changes or...
Chairman, most of that is done through the state?
Yeah.
When you do Sheridan Lake Road. So you're working with the state for funding, you're working with the state, so I'm gonna guess the municipality is also working through the state in order to get their portion. Am I right, Mark, or?
There, there are federal dollars that were handed down to the state, and then we're going, the state will administer ours. Uh, I believe that, that would be for the project that we are discussing now between Alberta Drive and, and three eighty, Highway three eighty-five. Uh, Mr. Hamm was, was referring to, I believe, that I did have heard that the city is doing a study from the city limits out to, I'm not sure if it's Dunsmore, I believe it's to Dunsmore, it might be to Alberta, as far as they may incorporate some future city plans for that area.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Motion of the floors, just to move forward with the plans and, and give a vote of confidence to the highway department, pretty much. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I would agree on moving forward with the plans, but I also feel, Mark, that you should take into consideration, um, just moving forward with, considering erosion and drainage and everything else, I would consider moving forward with, uh, paving that bike path, so to speak, area. Um, you know, originally, when you started talking about it, as many bicyclists that showed up, I almost thought about saying, well, why don't we have the bicycle associations raised a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to pave that? You know, if they want the trail, let them pay for it. Um, but, uh, but I think in, in light of that we're already gonna be grading it, um, if we're gonna grade it, that's gonna interrupt the, the drainage, the, the erosion, and that's so forth, and seems to me to make sense, I'm not an engineer, but to, to cap it off and make sure that it's not eroding away. And even if we put grass there, there's a certain period of time before the grass takes and roots and everything else that we're gonna wind up with erosion as well. So I'd, I'd say consider that in your plans, but as far as what you're offering us right now, I'm not opposed to it, that's for sure.
Chair, just one more thing if I could. Sorry, sir. Um, is the sidewalk going to anywhere where we're putting the sidewalk? Is like, is it gonna connect anywhere?
It does not. There is no sidewalk on Alberta or Alberta going east or the south, uh, I mean, north, and, or, hey, from Alberta east, there is no sidewalk, there is no sidewalk in that subdivision at Alberta. And from Spring Canyon Trails going west or south, there is no sidewalk. It's, it would be a path just in that curb and gutter section.
That's what I'm saying. So, um, the other issue is, most of the time when I see bikes, even in Rapid City, they're, they're not going on the sidewalks, they're going, which in downtown you can't anyway, they're going on the street. So they'll be riding on Sheridan Lake Road and that, that additional, um, area on the edges, um, is where, a lot of times, that is where their safety factor is. So if there's like a walking path, I'm seeing in e, either, uh, our county or other areas where it's just dirt, but basically they've worn a path where if they're walking, um, it, it just makes the path. So I don't see bikes being on it, but I see if people wanna walk on that side area, they're going to, just so there's some safety factor where you have enough room for people if it's gonna be a walking path, basically. Um, and the other thing is, uh, you won't have to do snow removal, because if they're walking, they'll, they'll make that path and it'll keep, um, basically, um, dirt anyway, if that's an area they want. And if that becomes an issue, I think later on then, and if it's still county, then we should pave it if the city puts a, a sidewalk there. So I would see how many people use it, you'll be able to tell just by the path that it makes.
Thanks, Deb. Mr. DeSanto.
Mr. Chair. Mark, also, uh, just to address one of the concerns that Mr. Hamm brought up, where will the storm drains discharge?
There is one discharge, I know, on that, uh, east end that will be discharged into a current, uh, drainage easement through Countryside North.
Okay.
And, uh, then there's several drainages that work to that north side. Everything through that, or most everything through that area, uh, will drive, will go north until you get, I believe, past Spring Canyon Trails, and then we'll have some, that will go south.
Okay.
Through, through natural dri, existing drainages right now.
Before I go to Dan, what I'm, the discussion is good. So Joe and Mark, you guys have got some input from the commission, what their, some of their concerns are, so I would suggest at some point, maybe setting up some, uh, visuals, you know, tours of which the plans are. And it sounds like, uh, your plans are, is no sidewalk, but it's gonna be graded for one. That could be an option that could come forward later on. That's not something that has to be done right at that time, but then a good cost estimates, because from what I'm getting from the discussion, that's something that they may wanna consider. But depending on the budget, how much it costs, some things may get eliminated. So with that, Mark, I've got one person who's been standing there for about five minutes waiting to speak, so we'll do. Before we go to a vote, we'll take one more public comment.
Uh, Dan Richard. Uh, my son lives on, uh, well, Ham Sommel. And, uh, his, his biggest concern is, is during the w, uh, winter, is these bicyclers, you can't give them the required footage on the side because of the snow piled up and the traffic is heavy enough that, that you can't move over. So I wanna take Commissioner DeSanto's six on this, and if they, they want a sidewalk, they, you should get together with the bicycle associations and say, you want a sidewalk? You need to come up on a hundred and twenty-five grand.
Thanks, Deb.
Because they use the roads, they don't pay the taxes. They don't pay any road tax on them bicycles at all. That's my complaint.
Thanks, Deb.
You know, we, it's like, we have to bend over backwards to please a group that doesn't, is not even involved with paying for it.
Thanks, Deb.
Yes, I know, they have to drive a car to get there and all that, but when they're on that bicycle, they're using that road and they're not paying.
Thank you. So, right now, we'll go to the vote. Oh, Mr. Farabee, what would you like to do? You're gonna abstain?
Well, uh...
Are you gonna abstain?
I got another comment first, uh...
Well, if you're gonna abstain, you can't comment. That's my question.
Have any sided yet? I got a comment. On the sidewalk, if we go ahead and pu, put a sidewalk in, or just call it a sidewalk and the bicyclists are on there, and we have some people walking, and I don't think it'll be very many people, but if they're walking, then they're gonna have the bitch of the bicyclists in the way. So how do we address that? Sidewalks are for, for walking, not for bicycles. Sounds to me like the sidewalk is being set aside for bicyclists.
I, I disagree. From the discussion that we had, that's an option, it's being cleared off, so. Am I correct, Mark?
Uh, if I can answer that, uh, currently, well, in the de, original design, it was designed for a six-foot sidewalk slash multi-use is, is what it is. So it could, could be both. To clarify things a little bit here, too, uh, the, the bicycle enthusiasts are not asking for the sidewalk. What they're asking for is removal of the curb and gutter and/or, and/or in, install a bicycle lane, an extra five-foot lane to the width of that forty-foot that's already in place, uh, for a bicycle lane across there. That would require additional right-of-way, and that would, that would steepen back slopes, it would encroach into more private property. And we, of all the properties that have, have been acquired so far, there's been no one that has indicated they would be willing or want to give up more additional right-of-way on their property. So the biggest, that's probably the biggest issue. It'll, it, it would cost more, we figure it would cost more to put in that bicycle lane or remove the, to remove the curb and gutter, you also need additional, uh, right-of-way because now you have to make a ditch section to catch your drainage and run it to the next natural drainage. Uh, in, in this particular area, we only need, uh, it's only planned for eighty-foot of right-of-way. Once you get past the curb and gutter section, it goes out to a hundred-foot of right-of-way. So for us to drop back and remove that curb and gutter as, as being requested by the bicycle enthusiast, we would probably have to go back and negotiate at least another twenty-foot of right-of-way on these properties. And it, uh, it's not gonna be taken lightly by, by the people. It could cause some setback issues and, and other things that, uh, that's the reason it was originally designed for curb and gutter through this section.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark, for that clarification, because I think we were going down a different road as far as the bicycle stuff, so. Miss...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Um, we're talking eight tenths of a mile. Is that right?
Eight tenths of a mile.
With the curb and gutter. You know, I'm a cyclist as well, and I, I've ridden my bike from the, uh, from San Francisco to the Oregon border, and nobody was providing extra space for me on that road, and it's one of the most traveled bicycle routes in the country. Um, the cyclists will figure out how to, how to ride it and how to stay safe, and they'll pick up their speed and get past that eight tenths of a mile if they're worried about getting struck by a car. Uh, so I'm not, you know, as far as, if, if the engineers have decided that curb and gutter is the way to go, then curb and gutter is the way, we're not gonna take it out for bicyclists, in my opinion. But of course, I'm only one vote. So I would, I would say, let's, let's proceed with the plans as, as you've presented them and talk about that, uh, that grading, uh, later, because we can address it later, move forward so we can get this project on the road.
Thank you.
No pun intended.
At this point in time, we'll go to a vote. Roll call vote, please.
Buscud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hagcock?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Thanks, Mark, and Joe.
Thank you.
Items from the Human Resources.
Morning again, Commissioners. The policy we had in place for performance evaluations for department heads in the past coincided and, and worked well with the old compensation policy that we had, where raises and increases were given January or July. We recognize as we were starting to implement the, the new pay policies that are effective January of 2019, that, that program for department heads would no longer be effective. Um, because of the, the way the policy is written and the way the pay, uh, structure was approved, it actually allows for those increases to occur the month after their anniversary is recognized. So what we're recommending is that we actually, um, rework or reconstruct or reword the policy, if you will, around performance evaluations, so that it actually coincides and works well with the, the approved pay structure that we have beginning 2019. Um, so in the past, we would normally schedule all of the department head performance evaluations, uh, in November and/or December, and their increases would be effective in January. With this new proposal, what we're asking is that the commission would then do the performance evaluations sometime during the thirty-day window prior to the anniversary date of those department heads. And then that, uh, whatever the increase is that would be approved for performance purposes would then be effective the first of the month following their anniversary dates. So they occur throughout the year is what I'm saying versus just all at one time. That way, it actually ties to their anniversary dates. It, it breaks it up so that you would benefit from a, a smaller time period where you'd have to do this, and you could focus more on the individual department head performance versus trying to schedule everybody on one given day and then, uh, put them through the process. So, uh, the recommendation I have is, is in the packet. Uh, Holly and I have worked on this together, um, and I have to say, I'm, I'm really proud of what it is. It addresses not only the appointed department heads, but it also addresses the appointed department heads that report to users' boards as well. Uh, so what you'll see in this policy is that for regular appointed department heads, this would give them a thirty-day window. Uh, with, uh, appointed department heads that report to users' boards, however, it actually increases that to a sixty-day window to start, so they could also meet with their user board before they would come to you as a commission for their annual reviews.
Thanks. Thank you, John. As, this came to a head because we end up having, we're at our scheduled department heads, and we end up having two commissioners gone, but this, this is what happens when, uh, we catch things as we're moving and going, and, and i, it's actually a good thing and it's fair. So, uh, I wanna thank Holly and John for doing the work on, on this.
Chairman.
Miss, Miss Hagcock.
I'm in agreement with this, and because it's more individualistic, instead of trying to do everybody, we were doing everybody the same day, or, um, I thank Holly and John for, actually, it was a good thing that that happened, be, because, again, it focuses on that department head instead of, we're doing five or six, trying to figure out, okay, um, that's a lot of reviews, and then returning to those reviews on each one to make sure that you got the right person with the right, um, you know, categories or whatever you wanna call them. But, um, bottom line is, um, John, you've been an asset to our county, you've changed a lot of policies that we needed, and they have been very positive. And with Holly's help, because Holly has all that experience with, um, and your compensation board and other people in this county, John, you have worked very positive. So I thank you for all your work, and it seems like you do a lot of research, from what I've seen, and, uh, really come up with some really, uh, good resolutions. So, um, thank you, Ms. Holly and John, and, and to our county that work with John. You come up with some really good things and changes these last couple of years, or this last year, I should say, John. Anyway, uh, thank you for all your work, and I'm in favor of this, I just think that was really positive. Thank you, uh, Mr. La Croix as well.
I'll, I'll echo that, uh, to you, too. With the Compensation Committee, as they, they move and they operate... With the Compensation Committee, as they move and they operate, that has been their goal is to give individuals recognition and try to get more personal with, and I think that goes along with the department heads and I think this helps get to that point by giving them more one-on-one attention from the commission. So I'm in support of it also. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I feel possibly that this should be something that we vote on when the new commissioners are seated. And the reason that I say that is because if we're gonna do it this way, and I think it's a good idea, John, I really do. But if we're gonna do it this way, what that will mean, more than likely, we're gonna have reviews every commission meeting. There'll probably be one, at least one or two reviews.
There'll be at least one each month. When we actually scheduled it out, it looks like there may be one month somewhere through the year where there's not a review.
Okay.
Based upon the structure, the reviews, actually, there would be a few people that are due already in December. So at the next meeting, you would already have two or three folks that would be due for their review.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think that in light of that, the new commissioners may want to have some input on this as far as whether or not they would rather do it all in one lump or whether they'd rather spend an extra maybe hour at multiple commission meetings.
That's just a suggestion.
I'm sorry, if I may, sir. The reason for this change is actually this coincides with the approved pay structure. So that actually, for all employees within the county, they would see the increases the month after their anniversary date. If we retain this process, none of the reviews for department heads then would coincide with their actual anniversary dates or with their increases. It would be done at a period of time that you would determine, but it wouldn't actually coincide with their performance review cycle.
I see.
And Mr. DeSanto, I agree with your part, but I think we kinda fell on this on ourselves by not being here for the evaluations to start out with.
We jumped on the sword, right?
Yeah, we did. So I think we need, in order to keep up and keeping track, I think we need to move forward. Was there a motion, Karen?
No.
There wasn't.
Move approval.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buschardt.
Yeah, I think it makes perfect sense. The problem is you're gonna have a executive session every meeting.
Yeah. At least once a month. That was my biggest concern. Just so the general understands that. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion passes with four and one with no vote.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Items from the chair. As you can see on the picture, at our last commission meeting, we approved an entry into the parade of lights for Rapid City and as you can see, you see the truck and it says no problem and it's on the other side. I wanna give great thanks. I know Mark just left, but I wanna, there was a group of people and Holly will know who they are. I only know about five of the names. There they are, that helped put this together. But I also take a look at what they did in that shop. How everything's safety taped off and so forth. There's Mark and... But I just wanted to commend you on the setup of putting the light or decorating the truck because when I walked in there, you had everything taped off safety-wise to keep people out of any areas of any problems and everything was a perfect, and I just wanted to express my thanks to not only Connie and Mark and Holly for getting all this work done, but there is... So I have problems with names. Alexa, I think, from EU One One and so forth. I mean, they really put some, and Sandra. I mean, a lot of efforts went into doing this for the first time this year and we actually did win an award this year for creative, what was it, winner for Creative Spark, a most original theme for the non-business and nonprofit category. But I mean, these people, all the lights were donated, all the time was donated and it was a last-minute deal. But I think we rocked it down there. I don't know if anybody else went down there, but it really looked good. Holly, do you have anything you want us to share? You were one of the volunteers that gathered all the lights and...
Just a big thank you to our amazing staff that everybody stepped forward and from donating the lights to money to their time and their energy. It was fun. We had a good time doing it and Mark and the Highway Crew was amazing helping us get all the electrical figured out and, I mean, I can't tell you how many extension cords and outlets and things that were wired in there, but it was amazing. It was fun. So just a big thank you to everybody and thank you to the commission for allowing us to do it this year.
You're welcome. And I think it was a good thing. I think for the first year, I think we're gonna get more people next year. We can plan more and it'll be, you know, you only need so many people to decorate, but it's not all about decorating the machinery. It's also a point of getting together and gathering and having the family together to see where you work and meeting the people is one of the biggest things, but they really did a good job.
Who came up with the slogan?
That was a combination of Holly and Connie.
I love it. It's awesome.
Thank you, guys.
That was a great display of teamwork from Pennington County, so I thought that was pretty awesome.
One other thing that I wanted to go over, folks, is we have the LNI games coming up, December fourteenth. Holly ran me off the copy of that. But this year it's starting, it's starting an hour earlier. Last year it was eleven o'clock. This year it's starting at ten. There's a different coordinator. Roger White Eyes is the coordinator. If you wanna show up at nine AM, the rule, for the rules of the meetings, that'll be in Rushmore C and D. The Pennington County team this year is gonna be Deb Hickock, Mark DeSanto, Lloyd LaCroy and Ron Roskineak. Those are gonna be, we got fourteen, our team members. What you can expect, what I'd like to do is, and I talked to Ron a little bit earlier, but I think we need to meet somewheres at a certain time, like in front of the ICE Arena. Say if Ron wants to go to the training for the, how to do the rules and know the regulations, maybe we set it at nine-thirty, quarter till, let's do, let's do nine-forty-five.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickock.
Do they have practices, you said, or somewhere where they show us how to do that beforehand? Is that nine and it's in the ICE Arena?
No, it'll be in Rushmore C and D, the lower levels.
Rushmore C and D?
It's across, it's across from the ICE Arena, that's why. So that's will be where if you wanna learn the rules and learn, play the games, show up at nine. Meet your team members, nine-forty-five, in front of the ICE Arena.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Does that sound acceptable to everybody?
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And just for note, Pennington County beat the city last year and we won, so.
We beat 'em bad.
So they're gonna be working hard. They actually teamed up with another person last year. It was only three members. This year it's four, so they... You can play with as many as you want. We've seen them with teams of eight, I think. So it gets, it's a real exciting and fun time and I don't have some of the other stuff, but there's gonna be the red carpet welcoming, the LNI and some other things that are going on to recognize the importance of this tournament in our community and what it brings and some celebrations. But we can get some emails out to some of the commissioners and the future ones. With that, we'll move forward to committee reports. Left to right.
Yeah, it's not really a committee report, but it, I wanna, Sunday night I went down to the square and they had the lighting of the first candle of the menorah. And anybody who hasn't been there really needs to go. It's really, really a coming together of religious change and I was impressed. There was, and not that many people there. Sang a couple of songs in Hebrew, which is not my specialty. It's difficult, but it was very, very enlightening and the story of the menorah is something we should all know and appreciate. Just about the fourth, third or fourth time we've been down there and it's very, very enlightening. The other thing is, a little more serious note is, I read in the paper where the Legislative Commission Committee meant on mental health. And I didn't see anything there about a West River Mental Health Center. In fact, what I did read was they're gonna throw a bunch more money at 211, which doesn't do anything other than maybe provide some more access to more people, but then what are you gonna do with them? What are we gonna do with them? And I was afraid that that was probably gonna happen and that's exactly what's gonna happen. We're gonna end up taking more people. Now it's gonna be everybody in West River. And then there was one other thing they were gonna try to do. I can't think of what that was, but it sure wasn't gonna help us at one bit. It's gonna hurt Pennington County and I know we're gonna end up with a treatment center, just like we did with alcohol and I'm against that. But that's, hopefully somebody, I don't know how that study is coming that they're going to do so we could take it to the legislature, but I haven't heard any more about that. I hope someone takes the initiative and tries to change to what the legislature is trying to do. But they're just typically throwing more money away at something that didn't give me help. That's it.
Thanks, Ron. Deb?
Went to the volunteer fire department. We did a dinner for all the volunteers. We invited Carrie and Ron and the commission. And again, thank you, Lloyd. We talked about that again, but we do that, or we try to do that every year because of all the different things that our volunteer fire department and our career firefighters have to go through. And it seems like this last couple of years, I don't know what's going on, but it seems like there's been more fires than ever. So for our first responders, I would just ask people, it's Christmas time, to say some prayers for these people that put their lives on the line for us, so I would appreciate that and I'm sure they would too, so.
Thanks, Deb. Mark?
No reports.
I have no reports. None there. We have a few minutes before Boards of Adjustments. Does the Board wanna take a short break and then come back?
Move for a break.
Do you have vouchers, Lloyd?
Oh, sorry. We do have approval of the vouchers for 275, 502.
Don't move, sir.
Take it.
Moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One no. That was approved. Motion by DeSanto, take a break till ten-thirty.
Second.
And seconded by Hickock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, folks, welcome back from break. I'd look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
Move to go into Board of Adjustment.
Moved and seconded by Buschardt to Board of Adjustments. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're in the Board of Adjustments. I'll recognize. Brittany.
Good morning. Brittany Molliter, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item A is variance VA 1818 to reduce the minimum required lot size from forty acres to 19.419 acres. Proposed lot one and 1.953 acres, proposed lot two in the general agriculture district. As the property stands today, it consists of twenty-one acres. The current zoning is general agriculture. The future land use is low-density residential district. The property is currently vacant with the exception of six billboards that are single-faced on the subject property that are considered legal, non-conforming. They do have a plat request in that was originally approved by the Planning Commission on November twenty-sixth with ten conditions. It will be heard at a later time in this meeting. But the property owner is requesting that Lot One of Borglum Subdivision be 19.419 acres in the general agriculture district and Lot Two be 1.953 acres in the general agriculture district. The reason for the lot split was to separate the billboards from the existing property. This was, the layout plat was actually approved by you guys also at an earlier commission date. The surrounding zoning within one mile of the subject property, there's a multitude of zoning districts. Almost every zoning district is represented within one mile and the future land use within one mile is predominantly low-density residential district, which is the future land use of the subject property. The criteria for a variance request, the first one is that the specific circumstances or conditions, which such as exceptional, narrowness, topography or sighting exist. There are no particular physical conditions that would warrant approval of the lot size variance, that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This lot size variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from property zoned as general agriculture district. That due to the specific circumstance or existing condition, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the proposed lots one and two of Borglum Subdivision to meet the minimum lot size of forty acres or be rezoned to the appropriate zoning districts, which would be limited agriculture district for Lot One and highway service or general commercial district for Lot Two. It could also be rezoned to low-density residential district if the property owners so choose. The nearest limited agriculture district is within six hundred feet of the proposed Lot One and general agriculture district is adjacent to proposed Lot Two and highway service district is within three hundred feet of proposed Lot Two. That the granting of a variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting this lot size variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest. The staff has not received any complaints or concerns regarding this variance request. However, the lot size variance would allow a 19.419 acre lot and a 1.953 acre lot in the general agriculture district, which is not in harmony with our zoning ordinance and staff is not making a recommendation at this time. But if there were any conditions that needed to be included, concerns are being addressed through the plating process.
Thank you, Brittany. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions?
Chairman.
Ms. Hickock.
I've never seen anybody split off two acres basically for billboards. Has that happened before and why now?
Yes, it has. It was actually down the road, a bit off of Boulder Hill Road, I believe. They did a similar request. I wanna say with last year or two.
So doesn't the landowner have to give them permission to put the billboard up? Do they buy the land? I guess I'm not getting it.
Oh, the billboards have been there for a very long time.
Right. I guess that's what I'm saying. So they've been there for a while and now why are people starting to split those off into, instead of just saying those are on their land, take them down or leave them up?
Okay. Sorry.
The owner of the property, as it consists today,
Right.
wants to retain ownership of the billboard property and sell off the rest. That's why they split it off.
That's why I needed to know. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this comes to us from the planning staff with no recommendation, but if it is approved, it would be... Does not recommend any conditions to be included as concerns, requirements will be addressed through the plating process and we do have this on our...
Regular agenda.
Regular agenda towards the end, so.
I'll move approval.
Second?
Okay, just a second. We have a motion for approval in a second. So motion on the floor is for approval and there's a second. Do you still wanna speak? Okay. Please come forward and identify yourself with the record, please.
My name's Bill Hearn. I'm one of the adjacent property owners, but that's really not why I'm here. I'm also president of the Pine Haven Road District, which this property impacts. I'm also president of the Pinehang, Pine Haven Road District, which this property impacts. And my, like a lot of these small road districts, we really struggle to have enough revenue to maintain our road, okay? So my concern here is in, in breaking off that strip that's where the billboards are, is that section would no longer be contiguous to the road district. And my concern is that, um, at some, then they would petition to remove that from the road district and consequently we would lose revenue to the road district with that property being removed, you know, uh, from the revenue that we currently have. And we kind of got to struggle to get every dime we can to maintain the road. So that would be my concern. Uh, the other part is just an observation, I guess. You know, they recently put in a, uh, an access, uh, into the property right off of, of the road, which is fine. But there are five other lots in the subdivision on the road district that, uh, do not currently have homes on them, okay? All of those are, um, uh, zoned as residential. This property kind of looks the same. I mean, it's a joining lot with an access that doesn't have a home on it. And it's zoned, um, agricultural. Now, I'm not, I don't really have a dog in that fight or whatever, but it's, it's the abnormal lot in the, in the subdivision, I guess I would say. But my biggest concern is that there's a potential of losing the revenue off of that small strip, since it would no longer be contiguous to the, the road district.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant, would the applicant like to respond? What the intent is?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Does the, uh, bigger piece belong to the road district?
Okay.
And we've already approved a plat for that larger piece of property. Somebody's gonna build on that, is that correct?
Correct. The layout plat was approved by both the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. The minor plat was approved by the Planning Commissioners. Then, and then you guys are gonna see it at a later time in this meeting.
So that bigger, the larger piece that would remain, would still remain in his road district?
Correct. And this lot actually was in front of you guys because they did a road construction within a section line right-of-way in order to cross that section line off of Pine Haven Road. Um, I wanna say within the year. Um, is my understanding from speaking with the applicant that that property has been within the road district and has been paying tax to the road district? Um, that was of the understanding when they, um, did the section line road.
So to address that concern, it sounds like to me that there would be no revenue lost. That particular piece of property is gonna continue to pay into the road district. You just won't have, I mean, right now, you're not getting two different streams of revenue from that larger piece of property that includes the one-point-nine acres. So you're not gonna lose anything. It, that's what it sounds like to me.
Well, I guess I don't know.
You kind, you need to speak at the mic, please.
Since that piece would no longer be contiguous to the road district, I would think that they could petition to, you know, back that section out of the road district.
But we would, you, they'd only be backing, if that happened, they'd only be backing that one-point-nine acre section out. And you'd still be, continue to receive the revenue that you'd already been receiving.
Correct.
From that larger piece of property.
Correct.
So you wouldn't necessarily lose anything, but you might not gain by the split.
Well, I think we could lose the revenue for the one-point-nine acres.
Which would be the equivalent, I don't know what, what would be the, the loss there?
That mill levy on that, you know.
That small piece.
But we, we, you know, we ask for the highest mill levy we can get on that. So we get all the revenue we can. But like I said, we just don't have much money, so I hate to lose some, so.
Okay. I understand your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Current motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One no from Mr. Buskirk.
And I'm gonna abstain.
I'd appreciate if you're gonna abstain, let us know before we start comments. Because that, or tell us why if it's a conflict of interest, you own property there or something.
Does to do that.
Moving along, item number B.
Chairman, did that pass then with the amset?
No.
Oh.
It failed then.
So the motion fails for, no, sorry. Thanks for catching that. You gotta have four people to approve. And it didn't pass.
Are you ready for item B?
Yes.
Okay. Item B is a variance request, um, eighteen-nineteen, Cassie Bullstead, Assistant Planning Director, sorry. Um, to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet for an existing detached garage. Um, the applicants for this property have actually also submitted a request for a layout plat and a rezone, which was heard by the Planning Commission yesterday and will be heard by this body on December eighteenth. So the agent, Fish, Fisk Land Surveying, has requested that this variance be continued to the eighteenth so that all the requests on the property be heard on the same date by this body.
Second.
Move to continue to the eighteenth. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item C, this is variance eighteen-twenty. This is a request to reduce the minimum required front yard setback on the east property line from twenty-five feet to five feet for an existing detached garage. The applicant in this case is Fred Johnson. As this property exists today, it is zoned general agriculture district, is eleven-point-four-eight acres. Um, the lot size is legal, non-conforming. Access is off of Shefer Place via an existing driveway. And it currently contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. Um, this property and this, um, variance has a little bit of a history to it. In two thousand and nine, there was actually an ordinance violation that was opened for a garage that was built without a building permit, which is the garage in question. Um, on September thirtieth of two thousand and nine, there was a building permit issued for that garage. And the site plan that was submitted for that building permit indicated that the garage met the twenty-five-foot setback requirement. So that ordinance violation was closed in two thousand and nine. Um, in July of this year, staff received a complaint, um, that the garage that was permitted in two thousand and nine does not meet the twenty-five-foot setback. Um, so staff went out there on October third of this year and verified that it does not appear that this garage meets the twenty-five-foot setback. Um, there's the garage and the property line is the fence line roughly. Um, so the property owner, Fred Johnson, did contact the planning department to discuss what's required to bring this structure into compliance. Um, and then on October twenty-ninth of this year, he did apply for this variance and indicated to planning staff at that time that the detached garage was actually built by the previous owner. Um, the encroachment issue was not disclosed to him when he purchased the property. Um, so he's just trying to fix the situation now. So the four criteria for the variance request, um, that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exist, which staff has verified through building permit records, um, aerial images, and a site visit, that the detached garage is there and was constructed in two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten. Um, that the variance does not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from that particular zoning district. This variance would not do that. Um, that due to the specific circumstance or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. If you did apply the zoning ordinance strictly, it would require him to meet or exceed that twenty-five-foot setback, which would require him to remove a portion of the garage. Um, and that granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Staff has not received any complaints or concerns with regard to this variance request, um, with his mailings that went out. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance eighteen-twenty, staff recommends two conditions be included.
Thanks. Thanks, Cassie. Is there any questions for Cassie?
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
Just a question. Um, so shouldn't, to be fair to the applicants, certainly know that if someone's gonna abstain, they should abstain at the beginning of the conversation on the issue instead of at the end? Because maybe then they'd wanna wait for their variance because at this point they would know, or might not know, maybe we all agree to it. But in fairness, I think if you're gonna abstain from anything, you should abstain at the beginning. I don't care if people abstain, but please be giving fairness to this board and fairness to the applicants that are, are doing these, um, variances and anything we do. I mean, it's only fair. So I would hope if you're gonna abstain, that they would abstain before the vote, not in between it.
Thank you. Ms. Hickok, that was my question of, of, of the reasoning why usually it's a conflict of interest or something. And all, in Boards of Adjustments, it's very critical that we have all four votes. And would appreciate that respect.
What's the legalities on saying it before, after, in between? You're allowed, I guess I, I'm calling the question on there of what would be the legalities of that? Meaning, are we supposed to abstain before? Can we abstain during immedi-, you know, while we vote?
Well, right, the call to question there was, would have been proper at that previous motion. We got Jay, Jay in there.
From what I understand, you can abst-, you can abstain at any time. Now, is that fair? Not necessarily, but I believe that that's the, the rules.
Is Jay in there, Holly, on abstention?
I don't know, Commissioners, specifically what page, but Robert's Rules does encourage you abstain from the very beginning so that it's known and fair to all involved, that that is what your position is going to be so you can abstain beforehand. It really encourages you not to participate in any of the discussions or anything if you're going to abstain. Because in essence, you're sitting there participating, knowing that you're gonna do something and you're not gonna act on it. So that's really not fair for all involved, frankly.
Okay, that, I, but it's not set in stone, just like a lot of this stuff. So I mean, person, as Mark said, but it's more a respect for the people and the applicants if they know.
Yeah, absolutely. County practice has always been, if you're going to abstain, you state so from the very beginning and you recuse yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
And I think that's just the point that we're trying to get to any Commissioner up here, that if you're gonna abstain, especially in the Board of Adjustments, please have enough respect for the applicant to give them that opportunity to either go back and rework on something.
Thank you for that clarification.
But I allowed a little bit latitude on that because of, of the situation and the Board of Adjustments and how critical it is for our votes and for the citizens to build and the applicants to build to come here and get their work done. With that, I, I think we need to move on. Is there any further discussion?
Since we're on that subject, if I recall, Robert's Rules say that I don't have to vote at all. Or any person on the board doesn't have to say a word. Silence is abstention.
Yep, you're, you're absolutely right. Uh, I think the point that this board is and what people are saying is that these applicants put their time and effort and money to be presented here today and would like a fair, unbiased hearing. And when it gets denied because somebody that was elected decides not to vote for no reason, it, it fails the process.
Sorry, Commissioners, I just found the policy that you guys had adopted back on February second, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, moved by Hickok, seconded by Troutman, that the chair will state the vote tally, including no vote heard from, and report the vote of others with any disagreement discussed immediately after the chairperson announces the vote. It's further moved to approve an exception to Robert's Rules of Order that a Commissioner wishing to abstain should make a statement of his or her intention prior to the discussion and vote on an issue. Motion carried four-to-one on a roll call vote with Commissioner Verby voting no. So that was a policy adopted by this board, February second, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. So you're right on the rules of Robert, but apparently it was brought up before, Mr. Verby. So we'd appreciate it if you're gonna abstain to at least let us know, be fair to the, the applicants.
And to the Commission.
Okay. Moving along, item C.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buskirk.
You know, this is another one of those unfortunate, eh, where someone bought the property not knowing that, uh, there was a problem on it. And now it comes up. And I guess it's been my theory and remains that it's not taxpayers of Pennington County who have a problem. And it's, it's the guy who bought it and it's the guy who sold it to them. They got a problem. And they should go to court and settle it. And if we make them tear the garage down, I guess the guy that sold it to them's got a problem. But to pin it on the taxpayers is wrong. So I'm gonna vote no. And I'll say that before we take the vote, okay?
I, my comment on this is further on, and what I think Mr. Buskirk's referring to is later on on the agenda towards the end. And I totally agree with that. I think at this point in time on this one, this is the way to fix a problem that exists. To bring it, uh, up to code. And I think this is a problem that we have with, with our department. And I was gonna say, you know, we need to get building inspectors on board that go out and verify this. I think that would probably be a part. But in order to do that, we're gonna have to look at raising fees to do, for the applications that, in order to do that. But I think that's something that's gonna be on this board's radar probably next year, is looking at something along those lines. Because these are the reasons why we keep getting these cases. This was two thousand and nine that this happened. And so, you know, the person who had it way back then knew what the problem was, but if we had an inspector, we probably could have gotten that, that fixed. And just because you get an inspector on board doesn't mean you're not gonna have him come forward. It takes ten to twenty years for things to get caught up, I, I do believe. But, uh, that's my thoughts, thoughts on this. I don't know if anybody else on the board has thoughts.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
I'm in agreement with what you're saying about inspectors. I'm also, um, think we need to look at licensing contractors in Pennington County. So then if you hire someone, it's not back on the owner, it's back on the licensed contractor. It puts someone that should know and does know the rules and regs. Um, and then I think it's easier to say no. Once they built something and have that contractor redo that, that garage or whatever happened. Because, you know, they're licensed to do the right thing. Get the building permit and do it according to specs, so. I don't know about making these people tear down their garage because we are part of that if we never move forward on inspectors or licensed contractors or doing something different in the county. So, um, I don't know where I'm going on that now, but I do agree that we need to move forward in the future of trying to change this issue that keeps happening with no building permits and building stuff in areas that, uh, shouldn't be.
Thanks, Deb. Is the applicant here today? Could you please come forward, sir? In light of what you've seen today, do you wanna move forward with this? Or would you like a continuance?
What are you saying?
Cassie, could you explain it to him?
Okay, so, um,
You gotta have four votes to get it to pass, a variance. The way things have gone today, there's a good chance that may not. Do you want to continue this to a later date?
Sure, I mean, I, how do you move, I mean, that's expense to move up or tear, I mean, whole, I mean, how do you?
I, I understand that.
I had nothing to do with it, I mean. I guess I'll wait, I guess, if that's what you're saying.
No, no.
Wait, just bring it up to a different, different time or something, or is it?
Yep, it'll just go to a different meeting.
Was it, you guys are changing hands here or something?
January.
Yeah.
All the, or?
No, they're, they're trying to explain, sir, that there's four votes. You need four votes up here. And if two people vote no, um, you're not gonna get it. And you've already seen an abstention and Mr. Buskirk had already said no. So, um, there needs to be a different solution, is the bottom line, sir.
My suggestion would be August.
You guys don't have building inspectors then, I, is that, is that what you're saying?
My suggestion would be to continue to January second meeting, or is it fourth?
I drive.
Before he decides, I'm gonna vote yes.
I, I'm given.
I'm gonna vote yes, and, and let me explain why.
Let, let me recognize you first. Mr. Verby.
It's twenty-five-foot setback out in the middle of nowhere. It's an arbitrary rule that a bunch of-
There's an arbitrary rule that a bunch of Rapid City County Commissioners decided to invoke upon us rural folks. Just crazy. In, in town, you have a five-foot side, is that a side yard or front yard or rear yard? What is that? Suburban residential, five-foot side yard is okay. But out there where I am or where he is, we gotta have 25 feet all the way around. It's just wrong. It's damn time that Rapid City quit telling us rural folks how to live.
All right, Mr.
Obviously, he's rural.
All right. Thanks for giving this.
So I'm gonna vote yes.
That's what I was hoping for. Now, you got one who says, I'm not even gonna count the votes. So you can continue it, or you can move forward?
So if, if it's, you only get one shot, or?
You need four, you need four yeses and one no.
Keep going. These are, they've already told you, you're gonna get four votes, okay? George doesn't believe in following any rules or laws in his county, so he's gonna vote yes.
Okay.
For one more to run.
I think, yeah, okay. I'm looking for a motion to.
Motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded by Verbe. Any further discussion? See none, let's do a roll call vote.
Buschard?
No.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Verbe?
Yes.
Hancock?
Aye.
McCroy?
Aye.
It passed.
There you go.
Passed the buck once again. We'll never get anything done as long as we keep voting to give them whatever they want.
We gotta do some changes, Buschard.
Okay, item D.
Hi, PJ Conover, Director, Plan Department. Item D is variance 1821 to reduce the minimum required side yard setback on the east property line from 10 feet to zero feet for an addition to Jolly Lane Greenhouse. The applicant was unaware that a 1977 plat had the setbacks and a 10-foot utility easement on the plat. So not only do they need a setback variance, but they also have to vacate the notes on the plat, which has to be done through the city of Rapid City. The applicant is aware of this. Actually spoke to him again this morning. He's meeting with Rapid City today. It's gonna take him a few months to do. So staff is recommending that variance 1821 be continued to the March 19th, 2019 Board of Adjustment meeting to allow the landowner time to work with the city of Rapid City and the county.
Let's do continue.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by.
Edgar.
By Hancock. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I'd look for a motion to adjourn Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Moved by Hancock. Seconded by DeSanto.
Further discussion? I wanted to, I've got a question about something. I don't wanna move out yet until I ask this question.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mark has a question before we move on.
PJ.
Sir.
In order to get this resolved, does it have to go before the legislature, or is it our decision?
Get what resolved, I'm sorry.
Get this situation resolved where if, if people are, basically to create a new rule that if, I am in agreement that if a contractor doesn't follow the rules, doesn't check up and see if he's building a garage where it's supposed to be, that he's the one that should be responsible. Now, on the other hand, I also agree with George that if we're out in the middle of nowhere, it shouldn't matter. I mean, people should be able to do what they want to on their own piece of property if they're not interrupting somebody else's life. But obviously, there's so many of these coming before us in a year that something's gotta be done. Where does it need to be done?
I'm not a legislative expert. My opinion is, I know there's code of ethics for contractors. There's also certain building codes that they have to, IBC, IRCs, and there's hundreds of pages in there. A lot of it falls on the landowner and the contractor. From things that I have dealt with with the state, I know they do like to rely on the local jurisdiction to come up with rules to police themselves.
But we can do that.
That's my opinion.
My opinion, Mark, and I've been down this road with, on the residential contractors board with the city is, is, it's, it's a pretty powerful animal, and it always comes down to a civil. You don't wanna get, get into the catfight of homeowners to, to the builders, government-wise. It always ends up going to the direction where they wanna go. In fact, they just passed it on the city council to do that, that it's more of a civil.
So in other words, what you're saying is, is that.
Or the wrongness, but.
That this gentleman here, if we denied him, would need to file a civil suit against the contractor and.
Yeah.
Boy, yeah.
The bottom line, the solution would be, are you asking if there should be inspectors and licensed contractors would help this situation, or are you just asking that particular instance?
No, I'm, I'm asking if general contractors should be held accountable if they build a garage and don't get the required setback. If they build a house and don't get the required setback, a shed, whatever, it doesn't matter. If there's a requirement for a setback and they don't, don't adhere to that requirement, should the, should the contractor be responsible for that? That's, I guess that's where I'm going.
But at least you got a licensed contractor, not someone just building something 'cause they can. And then that's where a lot of times we're having issues because they're not licensed to do it. And that's why you're having, I believe, a lot more issues.
I get that, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Verbe.
The larger question is, is why do we have any setbacks at all? We're talking rural South Dakota now. We're not talking downtown Rapid City or Sioux Falls. Why do we have, why do I have a 25-foot setback? Now, let me give some history. 30 years ago, when I bought the property, a couple of years later, a farce came along with a surveyor and moved the fence about 10 feet. Who in the hell knows exactly where the boundary lines are out in the middle of nowhere? There's stuff enough in the city. Rapid City imposed on us rural folks a 25-foot setback in general ag, in limited ag. But yet in suburban residential, including in Rapid, you can have a five-foot setback on the sides. What the hell sense does that make?
Doesn't make sense.
The larger issue is where a contractor, how much more is he gonna charge to have a surveyor come find out where the property lines are? And then somebody else get another surveyor and say, no, no, the property line's not here. Now, Davis is probably gonna disagree with me, but you get 10 surveyors, you're gonna get 10 answers, right? Well.
That's why you have setback.
Let me finish.
I didn't say a word.
She's out of order. Let me finish. If, if I'm stupid enough to put my, a building on what I think's the property line, and then along comes an authoritative source and says, oh, wait a minute, you're encroaching, then I've got a problem. Common sense says you're gonna set on your own, you're gonna set back your building from where do you think the property line is.
That's true.
So that you've got some sense. That's the real world. It's time that Pennington County get in the real world. If I'm in Fall River County, I don't have any setback. And probably half the counties in South Dakota. This is discriminatory for those of us rural.
Thank you, Mr. Verbe.
And it's time for city folks to.
Okay, one more.
Sometime I want you to explain how Rapid City put a 25-foot setback on your property out in the county. Sometime I want you to explain that, that you, you put that crap out and you expect people to believe it.
Okay, folks, let's, let's move on. No, we're getting way off base here, from a simple question into a debate. I think this can be put on the agenda or something on a later date, but let's move forward with what we have on our agenda today.
Oh, did we have a?
You guys have to vote on that.
Still gotta get out of.
Okay.
That's right. Sorry, I got everybody off track, but I.
We need to vote to get out of Board of Adjustments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we come to regular agenda items from the.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and voted the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda to request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item E, Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 1709 for Big Horn Canyon Ministries Incorporated. Perry Lewis is the agent, and approval's been recommended. Item F, Minor Plat 1838 and Subdivision Regulation variance 1809 for Borglin Historical Center Incorporated. Dwayne Penkratz, Ken Nash is the agent, and approval's been recommended.
Thank you, PJ. I entertain a motion. Is there any discussion on the two items? Anybody from the public want consent agenda poll? A or B? Any from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buschard.
And, and B, since we didn't approve the splitting of them, what, what's this minor plat gonna do?
That's what I was asking, the author of what, I don't know if you talked to Ken, of what's going on? He has other options.
So the recommendation is for approval.
No guarantee it'll get approved, but he has other options.
He satisfies, Brad?
Yeah, I'm satisfied. I'm satisfied, I'm gonna vote no.
Do you wanna separate F from?
Sure, I'd like to.
There's a request to move F.
Move approval of item G.
I'll second.
Uh, excuse me, folks.
What?
That'd be item E.
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 E's in Edward?
Yeah, E.
Sorry. E.
I'll second that, too.
You're removing F. Item E.
Also, we're.
Consent calendar.
PJ, is it F or E that?
E is the one remaining, F is the one requesting to be pulled off by Commissioner.
Oh, you're removing to approve E?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was asking for removal, and then I wasn't expecting that. Okay, so we do, we're gonna, on the consent agenda, we're pulling F, so we'll, there is a motion on the floor with a second from DeSanto for approval of E, or who's the second?
This is second from Buschard.
From Buschard for item E.
E.
Made the motion. Hancock? I did, okay.
And Buschard seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F. PJ.
Item F is minor plat 1838 and subdivision regulation variance 1809 for Borglin Historic Incorporated. Dwayne Penkratz, Ken Nash is the agent to create Lot 1 and 2 of Borglin subdivision.
Thank you.
So in the conditions, the applicant can either do a lot size variance or a rezone. The applicant chose to do the lot size variance. That didn't pass, so they have the opportunity to do a rezone. It basically sums up.
And this comes from Planning Commission with a recommendation of approval.
Correct.
So move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded for approval. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item G, the request to waive penalty fees from Fred Johnson.
Okay, this is the request to waive the penalty fee for the property that had the detached garage on it that was just approved for the variance. Basically, by our zoning ordinance, Section 511 W1 of the zoning ordinance states that any owner of property upon which work has been done for which a conditional use permit, variance, mining permit, plat, rezoning, or plan unit development is required, prior to issuance of said permit, shall pay a doubled application fee plus a $500 penalty fee. So Mr. Johnson, since his garage is already there, buyer ordinance would be required to pay a doubled application fee for the variance, which is $300 plus a $500 penalty fee. So he would be required to pay an additional $800 for the variance request. He is requesting that those penalty fees, totally $800, be waived by this body.
Thank you, Cassie, and I, Mr. Buschard?
Don't do me any good to say anything.
I'll move denial.
Second. Moved by Hancock, seconded by Buschard.
I have a substitute motion. Substitute motion.
And Mr. Verbe.
I move approval.
Second.
Substitute motion for approval seconded by DeSanto. Discussion.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Why I said denials, you didn't have to move your garage. Some of that mistake is, you know, on the applicants. And $800 is a lot better than moving a, taking down a garage. So that's why I'm in agreement with this. And again, I'll be looking at next year, trying to do some changes with planning, hopefully with the commission, we have left of this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
That is exactly the same reason that I would approve the waive of the fee because I think it's upon us to get this straightened out. And I don't wanna penalize this guy because we didn't get it straightened out in the first place a long time ago. So, and I will, happy to work with Deb on trying to figure this out and get it fair for our rural folks and that kind of, so.
Thanks, Mark. Mr. Verbe.
Mr. Chair, we, I don't know what a variance fee is. I presume 300, 400 bucks or whatever. He's already kicked that out, whatever it is, plus the aggravation we put him through. So let's, let's let him have the 800 bucks back. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if.
No, let me speak.
Go ahead.
I went one, two, three. Let's run, my thoughts on this is, folks, I understand what you, what Mark and George are saying. But we've made a habit of this, of waiving these fees. And what, and what happens is it gets out to the community that says, we'll just do it and see what happens later, which ends up getting thrown out, and so they're, nobody follows it. I hate to say it. I mean, I was talking about this at the very beginning of our deal. It's a civil, ends up being a civil action. Is it worth the $800 to go after the person you bought the house from? Are the Realtor that sold you the property, who is ever responsible for that, to do it? Pay, pay that $25 to go after it, or? That's how you make it accountable. The word gets out in the community that we're not just gonna waive it later on. I did this before, when I first started waiving it. It wasn't until working with Buschard for a while that I realized that. And, and plus, my personal experience is that we're just setting ourselves up for this every time, more and more people doing it. So I'm not gonna support the current motion on the floor for that.
Mr. Chair, one more time.
No, she's, she's next in line. Ms. Hancock.
Bottom line is, is that it's your responsibility when you're buying something as well. So I, I totally understand that it's somebody else did this, you bought it, and the Realtor and whoever sold you this house, it became your responsibility. But some of that responsibility is on you as well, to check and make sure that, you know, this property, and we do it all the time, I do rentals, and we check sewer water, we check everything. And then we also check if there's been any violations. So some of that personal responsibility is on yours, and that's what I'm saying. But I also didn't want you to tear down a whole garage because of it, so.
Okay, well, I got one person in line. Are you done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Verbe.
But, but once again, why is it 25 feet? Why isn't it 5 feet? That looked to me like a side yard. If, if I'm out in the middle of nowhere with a suburban residential, which I disagree with, by the way.
Call the question.
This is, this is, this is on the feed.
Suburban residential is 5 feet.
It doesn't have anything to do with the penalty, right?
But, but here, the three city commissioners are gonna vote against we rural folks one more time. You have the majority. It's just crazy.
You're, you're rural, we're not.
Okay, okay.
The three city commissioners are telling us how to live.
Call the question, please.
That's inappropriate.
No vote on the question. Call the question.
Okay, we're gonna move forward.
This fellow wants to talk.
I, I gotta get everybody else to stop talking first.
We don't vote on that first.
Okay, we went through the lines. We're gonna do this, we had one person, who, who is it that wanted to speak?
The applicant.
The applicant? Sir?
One, one question.
No, you need to come up.
Lord, you need to vote on the question.
I'm Fred Johnson.
Just a minute, I gotta, I gotta take a vote on calling the question.
If they deny it, that's fine.
Okay. So, there's been, was there a second? Call him the question.
So let him say something.
I'll, I'll remove it because he wants to speak, but most of the time you wanna.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, just a question. When you have a title company research something for when you buy a property, shouldn't, is that supposed to be in the, is that just for financial?
Well, titled, yeah, they. Well, he needs to identify himself with the record.
What was his name?
Fred? Fred? Okay, I'm just... For the record, it was Fred Johnson that spoke. Okay, so that was removed, so the original motion on the floor is for approval.
No, the original was denied.
Well, that... The motion that's on... Substitute motion on the floor is for approval.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? See none, let's do a roll call vote.
Buschard?
No.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Yes.
Haddock?
No.
LaCroy?
No.
So that brings us back to the original motion of denial. Let's take a roll call vote on that.
Buschard?
Yes.
DeSanto?
No.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
So the motion was for denial to waive the fees. Next, we come to item H.
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item H is a request to refund rezone application fees from Rutler Ranch. David Way as the owner, I believe. Ron Davis is here as the agent today for this, for this one. This is similar to some of the discussion you've had so far this meeting. This applicant came and talked with the planning department, wanted to subdivide a property, was given choices of a lot size variance or a rezone, ultimately chose to do the lot size variance first because it was a one-meeting shot instead of having to go to three meetings. I believe that's what they're inferencing, in using the word "easy." It's not a word we use in our office, actually. And the applicant is asking to have three hundred and seventy dollars waived. Again, we don't tell people what to apply for. We give them recommendations, we give them options, and then they choose ultimately what they want to do.
Thanks, PJ. Ron, did you want to...
This is kind of a strange situation because we talked to our client... I talked to PJ before we even started this, and I, you know, should you do a rezone, should you do a... Their size variance. All over the years, I've done a lot of lot size variances because then you don't establish a zoning out in an area, you don't spot zone. You have specifics about the site that if they meet a certain criteria, you can give them a lot size variance. The next guy that comes in and wants the same thing has to pretty much meet those same specifics or something unusual, so we've always done it that way. In this case, we decided to come down with a rezone application with the original submittal. When my surveyor got down here, he doesn't do this a lot, but when he got down here, he talked to the staff. They recommended to him that he should probably do the lot size variance because it would be quicker and easier, that type of thing, and he didn't really understand the whole process. So he went ahead and switched everything over and submitted the lot size variance, which then went to the board and was denied, and now we have a rezone variance, or a rezone application submitted for a meeting here on January fourth or sometime, so... So my idea was it just to kind of waive the fee for the second one and throw the first fee at it, so we only pay one fee to get this done. Whether you agree or not, I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, thanks.
We're just trying to get the fee waived. I don't want to blame the staff or anything. Nobody did anything really wrong. It was just some confusion and I'm just asking if we can...
Okay. Thanks, Ron. Ms. Haddock.
Chairman, so who is working on this? PJ, wasn't you? So they paid a fee?
Working on it at what point? I wasn't at the conversation that David is talking about. I was at a conversation. He came and talked with me across the counter and explained his frustration with this, and basically said that... They said that the variance goes to one meeting and the rezone goes to three meetings, and I said, "That's absolutely correct." And then they ultimately chose to try the one-meeting option.
So how much is a variance? Again, three...
In this case, it's gonna be three seventy.